Let's call this meeting to order. It's nine, excuse me, 103.
The Lozier?
Hi. Here.
Hound?
Here.
Excuse me. Thacker?
Here.
Gentlemen, we have four.
Okay, item three, agenda items. Number one, discussion of possible action to determine which newspapers will be used for publishing legal notices and in, and the order in which they will be utilized. Who wants to go first?
I will. I'd like to know when this is about, Mr. Chair.
Just a second. You guys got anything first?
Well, how did Mr. Thacker have, you mentioned the last time that you brought this up, you were in it doing an investigation. Have you come to a conclusion yet?
I believe that I have. We have the calculating of the costs of legal notices. I have a form which is from the Oklahoma Press Association which tells you how to calculate those. We have samples of that. You need to look at these. Let me see. I also have a chart or graph that shows a potential overcharge by the Clamore Daily Progress. And if you would like to examine that. Take your minute to look through it.
Mr. Thacker, just want to be clear. These items that you get charged from the items you've put in the paper? The Lozier?
I don't know where.
Or Hounds? Whose legals are they that have been overcharged?
When, after they've been examined, you can, you can look at them. There's a few examples here.
Are they your all's legal notices?
You can look at them.
Just a question, are they your legal notices because they do not affect my legal notices?
I'll tell you, they're not your legal notices. If you're almost finished with that, I also have an email here from Faith Wiley. Maybe you can read that. And also, when we, when I brought this up, I informed you that there was no itemized list of how this was being charged, whether it's tabular by the, by the word, it just, it's just a bill. And I know that when we turn in anything from a trip for a class, it has to be itemized. And since there are two, according to legal, there are two different ways that that can be calculated, I think they can at least put what version they used. And I haven't seen that. Oh, and I don't know if Mr. Iskey called either one of you. He is feeling under the weather and he said that if you had any questions during this meeting, he, he was well enough, you could, we could call him, put him on speaker. I get anyone need to relay that to you.
Okay. I'm having a real problem here figuring out how we, how we would handle something like this with an agenda item that says discussion with possible action to determine which newspaper will be used for publishing legal notices and the order in which they will be utilized.
There's nothing in the, there's nothing according to legal requirement that says you have to use one paper or another paper. The law was, according to them, it has to be published within the county. It has to be published within the county. There were either laws on if there's not a newspaper in that county, you know, you can go to an adjacent county and it's all covered as long as there's a legal publication in that county.
Okay.
So is it more of an invoicing situation that you're unhappy with, that your invoices detail sounds like?
That's one issue. The other issue is the fact that it appears that we've been, that people have been overcharged.
Mr. Dabney?
Can I address that? I, I received the same email that each of you received overnight and we've had the opportunity in our office to, to look at it throughout the course of the day. One, couple of things I don't want to point out. One is that you received an email from a party that stands to financially benefit from the contents of that email pointing out to you that we have, in their opinion, overcharged you. So for what it's worth, I would, I would like for you to, to understand that that conflict exists. Secondly, I want to tell you that having tried all day to duplicate the data that she presents to you from both our billing system and from having two people sit and manually count the words and lines in the ads to see if we could match the number of words and lines that, that her email says are in the, the one of two legal ads that, that she detailed, we have not been able to arrive at either of those numbers with, with multiple countings of the, the ads. I'm not saying that her counting is, is completely wrong, but I'm saying we're talking about little teeny words and little teeny lines filling an entire page of a newspaper. But what I can tell you is that our system that handles these things tells me that that is a 122-inch ad with 43.3 words per inch at a rate of 15 cents per inch is exactly what we've billed you. So you, you can determine whatever you want from a hand count that someone who stands to gain financially from our ad count being wrong, you can determine whatever you want from that. But I can tell you that a system that does this for newspapers all over the country for a living says that's what that ad is worth. And that, and that is the way we do business 100% of the time. If there are errors, we will correct them. I have offered to sit with you and go over this over the course of the last several months. You never have asked and you never have presented any of this information to me.
Wouldn't that be the same argument that you stand to lose financially?
We do.
That would be the same argument?
Absolutely. But, but what, but, but I didn't present to you something that would, that was telling you someone else is billing you wrong. And I didn't, and I didn't ask you to take action on that without talking to that other person. You have, you've not even asked us what, to respond to this. We get this in the middle of the night on the day that there is a meeting and, and you want us to look at a year's worth of, of legal ads and, and tell you where, where that all stands. I think that's crazy. But I can tell you that the two examples that she gave, I spent the morning working on one of them just to see if we could duplicate the numbers that, that she had and we could not, we could not match the numbers that she had. Our system generated a number for that bill, that's what we billed you. We bill every legal that we run using that same system. We've never had an attorney's office that does legals with 15 different newspapers complain that we have overbilled them versus what they've been billed from another newspaper. It has never come up. Have we, have, have there been errors? I'm sure there have. There, I'm sure there are calculation errors. I'm sure that there are word count errors. But if you try to count a thousand words on your computer and you try to count a thousand words on my computer, you will get a different number based on whether there are hyphens, words that are split over the, the ends of, of lines, a million different things and hand counts as well. And we'll, and we'll just tell you that a system that was built to serve legal advertising generated that bill and it generated it as accurately as it generates the rest of our bills.
But you admit there's, there are, could very well be errors.
No, I mean...
Well, you just said there, there probably are, I believe is what you said.
I mean, I, I, I think every process and... I, every, every, every process that has any manual component or human component whatsoever could have errors in it. But, but I have, I have...
But you had a computer system, though. Isn't that what you said?
We did.
You have computers?
People, I'm...
Okay. I'll just, for clarity. You did come in here a while back, a couple of years ago and tell us that the Clamore paper was the only one, and I have to go back and look at the minutes, that the Daily Progress was the only one that really could legally publish bids back when they were bidding before, a long time ago. I read the minutes and you were in the meeting. And so we, we elected then to go with the Clamore Progress. Are you familiar with, with that?
I don't, I don't think I've ever said that the Clamore Progress is the only paper that could legally do bids. What I've said is we're the only paper that has circulation that goes to all edges of the county. And so if you, if you, if you want to reach the entire county as is the purpose of, of legal ads, then, then our, our circulation model is a better model for you than, than one that's distributed in one corner of the county.
That is your opinion?
Yeah.
And if we really wanted to reach, which we do, the entire county, we print them all, we publish them all online and we go with whichever newspaper or a combination of.
We're the only one that publishes all of our legals online at no charge to you.
Yeah, we can, we can do that at no charge on our website.
State law doesn't allow you to do it without being in print.
And go with one of the newspapers or a combination of. But there's nothing, there's, there is nothing in the law that says that we have to go with a daily paper.
Correct.
It's a legal publication and that was what we were after. But when you started bringing up lots of issues, lots of issues, it made me think, well, I need to look, look at the big picture. And that's when it so happened that I got the, I was contacted by Faith Wiley and they pointed me out, they pointed me to this and that's what we've determined. And you're free to look at it. I mean, if they...
I have a copy.
You have a copy?
Yeah.
Okay. That was what you were saying, you couldn't come to the same numbers.
Exactly. Where, where it says this legal ad is this long, we counted it all day long, we can't get that number of words by manually counting it. We can check it in our system. Our system says how, how, how long it is. It says what the, the density of words per inch is and it says what the charge would be, which is exactly what you were charged. But if you want to, if you, if you would rather go with a, a hand count, then, then you, you go ahead and do that. But what I'm telling you is we use a system that newspapers use for, for legal advertisements all over the country and that's what has generated your bill. And, and I, I understand that you, you would love to punish us in any way you can for, for whatever you're mad at us over, but the simple fact of the matter is you got a fair bill for an ad. And, and I, I don't know what else to tell you about that.
It appears, according to these calculations, that the overcharge is to the tune of $7,481?
Kurt, you're looking at extrapolated averages based on a single ad that, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how you arrive at, at a number like that saying if, if this error is, is, which I don't agree is an error, by the way, but if this error is applied to every ad we've ever run, then this is the potential gap. That, that's not reasonable to do for a final decision anyway. That may be reasonable to, to use to, in order to determine what the potential might be if every ad is, is off by a certain margin, but I would submit to you that, that I can't duplicate that margin that she claims that ad is off by.
Did you come up with the same number that you billed us for when you were...
I did, exactly the same number.
Identical?
Identical. The, the ad is 120 inches long or with density of...
There's no inch rate.
122 inches long with a density of 43.3 words per inch at 15 cents an inch at 700...
There is no inch rate according to the OPAs. This is your...
Right.
This is your group.
Right.
There's tabular matter, straight matter.
Right, if you, if you...
And that's it.
But you, you didn't listen to my completed explanation?
I understand. You said there's so many words in...
So many words in...
That could easily be manipulated with how, how long the column is, how wide, that... I don't think that dog's hunting.
But it's all based on column inches, Kurt. I mean, everything's a column.
Mr. Post?
Chairman Lozier, I am at a loss as to what news, what is meant in item one, quote, "publishing legal notices." As you know, there are lots of different legal notices done by different counties and offices as well as the district courts. And we are here concerned that what is the business of the district courts with respect to legal notices that are part of our law done here on Court Clerk would not have, that is not within the authority of the county commissioners. So could you explain to us, you all have the documents up there, what legal notices are at issue here, please?
Mr. Thacker's working on...
The, the, just a second. The, one of the duties and powers of the Board of County Commissioners is to audit all accounts of any office that handles county money, regardless if some of these elected officials think that they're their own entity. They're not. And, what?
Ms. Trump, is why do you want an answer? I don't have one yet, sir.
You know what? And you're not going to get one. I mean, because you're with the state, take it up with the state. I don't have to deal with you.
Take one up with the state.
Your question. We audit the county money. That's the power in the, in the law. That's our job. And if we want to question as a board the, the accounts of any elected official in this county, we have the right and the duty to do so. And publications is one area where county money is being expended and we are looking at it. Now tell me, your honor, where in the law it says that we can't do that or that's not our duty?
Where is that?
It's not in there.
Under the duties of the Board of County Commissioners, county monies are your concern, court fund money, sir, or not?
Then spend court fund money.
You have still not explained what you mean about legal notices. My general court, it spends a lot of money every year. It spends court fund monies. By law, Title XNA gives us the requirement to give notices to certain acts of parents. It's published under those and it's paid for from a court fund. And I'm here to ensure that you are not under any misunderstanding that that is any business of the Board of County Commissioners.
And, and I don't want you to be under any misunderstanding that the county side of it is any business of yours.
What county side are you referring to?
County tax money. We're not talking about the court fund. We're not talking about your office. We are looking at county. The court fund's not county money.
No, it's not.
So what's the problem? This doesn't concern what you're even referring to. This doesn't concern that.
And our Court Clerk's office was concerned if anything would be impacted by that because we have very specific legal notice requirements different from other legal notice requirements. And we have, we have a higher, a higher stand, higher burden, a little bit different requirement of who can publish our notices.
And we're not even discussing that.
So that was my question and I was...
We're not discussing that here. That's not what we're talking about.
Commissioner, when you say publishing legal notices, what we do is also titled legal notice. And in item two, when you go on to talking about a drawing, a select rotation, that would not impact money suspended by the district court fund?
No.
Okay.
That was a whole lot of discussion about something we're not even talking about, but I appreciate your concern.
Mr. Thacker? Do you have something?
Well, I just, when we were talking about impacting other officers as to where they would be publishing their notices, I think that's where some of the elected officials were kind of wanting to be made clear that we still have that opportunity to select our newspapers in the county to do our legal notices with. And, you know, until you all just, you know, can disperse on what your situation is for the overreaches of the spending, I do, would like, you know, to make sure all that is cleared up, but, you know, when it was...
That is on today.
Right. Mentioned that. You were going to do a select drawing possibly.
Where do you, where do you, where have you always done your, your legal notices?
I've done, I've used all the county papers for...
Do you pretty well do them all at the same time?
No, we, we have limited notifications.
Okay.
And most of those are four times in the one year.
Okay.
So that, you know, I'm not as obligated to the newspapers as you all are and the other officers. Myself, I have four large publications a year and, and we try to sometimes rotate those. I know economy's kind of hurt us to just kind of select one newspaper and not run everything all at the same time in different county papers. But I just wanted to, to come in today to make sure that, you know, as an officer myself, I would still be able to have that option.
Of which one do you want to put in?
To use the papers because I can use all of them if I want to and I, I hope I could have that right to do that, to share the wealth a little bit because I know these smaller newspapers can use those funds, you know, a year, every other year, every two years or something like that. I have a, you know, but now with you gentlemen, I know, and according to everyone, you're doing a daily pretty much all the time with your county papers. And then of course, then there's a new law coming out effective November 1st. It's going to allow county publications to be bid and published on newspapers' websites. As Mr. Dabney was saying, that his right now is free, which I think that's a wonderful courtesy, but it's going to be law that they're going to get to bid if we choose to use their websites. And we don't then even have to use the actual newspaper. You just can put it in the website. So there's lots of things still to be considered, but I just wanted to make sure that I know you gentlemen are in the county of our county tax funds and I do appreciate that for you all taking a, a tighter look. Possibly maybe these invoices should have been looked at at the time they were received just to make sure they were being calculated correctly. But my, my position today is to make sure that if you go into a vote that takes away my privileges to use a newspaper of my choosing for the county constituents to get the best notification as in circulation because again, without these tax dollars for me to bring in here, we're not going to get the function very well.
And I appreciate that, I really do. Let me, let me ask you a hypothetical. If you published in a newspaper, any newspaper, and it turned out that that newspaper was not of legal status or something to that effect, would that void anything that you had put, put in there? Would, would that notice be void?
It possibly could.
Possible.
Through, through the courts because again, this is a legal matter. When I go to sell properties...
Yes, ma'am.
That I have to make sure that we have done everything in our legal system to make sure that we as the county sells this tax property. And most, first thing they check is did they receive notice and were they published?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm, I, same thing with banking. I have to make sure that where we bank is a legitimate bank. So for the 23 years and even more years that I've served here in the county, that these newspapers, very respectfully, are legal newspapers. Everyone in our county does.
And you're 100% right. What happens if it turned out one wasn't and the county is brought, had legal action brought against them? Who is named on that?
Well, yeah, you know, we would be sued and lose whatever.
But I mean, who's specific? The Board of County Commissioners?
The Board of County Commissioners and then of course, the officer that's in charge.
And the officer, exactly. And that's why, and you've, you've been very good about this and working with us on, you know, just like the banking issue you brought up. You know, you already had it handled. It was a good, you know, it was no problem. But where we're at today is because of, you know, there, there's, there's so many people threw the word lawsuit around. I mean, if I had a nickel for every time someone said they were going to sue the county, okay? So we start looking at this, or we, I started looking at this along with, with Ms. Wiley. And it is my belief that it's been, we've been overcharged. Not we, the people. I mean, we represent the county and I believe we've been overcharged. Mr. Dabney? He says we haven't. Well, you're the chair and you shut down your...
Okay, be quiet.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mrs. Wiley, I think you had some...
I was just going to clarify a point. My only concern about mischarges, potential mischarges, is about publication of minutes and claims of the county commission proceedings. I have not identified any mischarges in any other area or potential mischarges. It is strictly the county minutes and claims that are published every week. I have no concerns about any other publications whatsoever. The bid notices that I did the spot audit on were accurate. As far as I know, all the other district court claims, treasurer's office claims, all of that, I only audited the bid notices and the minutes and the proceedings with the minutes and the claims. And the bid notices were, appeared to be according to the word rate. So that is my only area of concern that I have raised.
Mr. Wiley?
I'd just like to clarify one point. Mr. Dabney mentioned the free publication of legal notices on his website. I don't know what system he uses, but the other three county newspapers also provide that service either through their website or through the Oklahoma Press Association website. So it is something that is provided now by almost all the newspapers in the state. There's still a handful of Duck Tape Bar. But for the most part, that, that service is, is available and it is, it is without charge to the advertiser.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything? Scott, you got something?
I just have one question and I know it's maybe a little bit different subject, but I send out a non-legal legal notice, so to speak. In other words, an informational notice once a year and I send it out to six newspapers. When I go to do that here in the next two weeks, when my plan was, when I go to put forward that purchase order, is that something that you all are going to deny on that based on that information or not? What that, that information what I, I hear every year is homestead exemptions, double homesteads allowing people to know throughout the whole county from north, south, east and west.
Hold on a second.
I'm sorry.
For basically the, all corners of the, the county, we go ahead and we send out for the whole, we want all the newspapers covered and that's why I chose to do that and has been accepted in the past by the Board, the PO has. So my only question is, is when that comes across y'all's desk because of what you're talking about, is that something that's going to be, that I could look forward to being denied and I need to go another route or can you answer that at this time?
Can't answer that at this time because we haven't... What was that? What was the action on Monday?
There was no action.
Okay. And so we couldn't answer that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe the agenda item says discussions possible to determine which newspapers will be used for publishing legal notices and in, and the order in which they will be utilized. Are we going to determine which, which newspapers we're going to use and then have a drawing? Is that what we're talking about here?
That's what we're talking about.
That's what I got.
And, I mean, I gave you mine. I'd like to tell you whatever he thinks, I don't know.
Mike?
Mr. Chairman? Okay, so you know, I think we have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I have a question on just the general, the general area here, legal notices. Mr. Thacker asked me under, referred to what power he was acting. And it is titled 19, section 339. The only thing that talks about an audit here would be paragraph two. And it says, "To audit the accounts of all officers having the care, management, collection or dispersal of any money belonging to the county or appropriated for its benefit." I've read through this, and y'all have a lot of general powers that go all the way through paragraph 25, D through E. There's nothing in here that gives you all the authority to tell anyone except you yourselves with your own publications how to tell these other county officers where to do their publications. Everyone in here who's an elected officer stands equally with respect to their individual responsibilities. And these county officers, their decisions of where to do their legal notices is theirs. I mean, you don't have the powers to do that. Now, what I would like to know is, have you asked your legal counsel whether you have the power to do what you're proposing to do today? I submit to you, you do not.
Let's call him. I think the biggest issue that I have here is, is we're not really talking about, I'm not talking about legal notices here. I'm talking about our publications, our bid notices.
For the county.
For the county.
Correct.
Not for the state. And, and as for the legal notices, that's something I guess it's going to be brought up later. That's, uh, the biggest thing to us right, or to me right now is our publications. We've got bid notices that have to go out, and we have to get this done.
I think a good day to be sick, sir. We are in the meeting. There's judges and elected officials. And one of the questions, and I'm going to put you on speakerphone, so that everybody can hear. And we'll have to test to see if they hear you in the back, okay? Okay. I'm going to put you on speakerphone now, you ready? Okay, can you hear me?
I can, I can hear you in the background.
Okay. They can hear you in the back. The question was brought up, um, about the, the powers of the Board of County Commissioners by Judge Post. And she has told us that her opinion is that we cannot... Would, would you, would you say it, so it's your own words?
I, sure.
Can you hear her? Could you come up here?
Yeah.
So he can hear you.
Mr. Iskey, other than legal notices, which are within the, uh, requirements of the Board of County Commissioners to do for bidding and other things that we discussed, other county officials have other legal notice requirements under the respective duties of their jobs. In looking at title 19, section 339, um, other than the power to audit the accounts of officers having care of funds, I find nothing in here that says that the respective county officers, including the court clerk, can be dictated or directed by the Board of County Commissioners to where they put these legal notices.
Judge, I think, I think you can be more of a circumstance. I think you're absolutely correct, and I would agree with you. Uh, I think what I'm looking at is, is title 19, section 444, that, that talks about some of the responsibilities of the, of the commissioners as to either the way they can publish. Because I, I do agree with you, Judge, that there are different requirements for different, uh, elected officials. Uh, and, uh, and certainly the, the, the power of the commissioners does influence, uh, matters that have to be published by private individuals on, on different types of proceedings, foreclosures and, and, uh, those types of things. I agree with you there.
Mr. Iskey, we have other, and I appreciate your comment. I don't think we're on different pages here. But there are other county officers here who seem to, to feel concerned that they're being directed as to where they choose to do their legal notices. Anything other than the Board of County Commissioners, the way I read section 339, is not within their purview. All county officers have the same right to elect where to do their legal notices, just like the Board of County Commissioners does. Isn't that right?
Uh, you know, I think that there are obligations for the, for the treasurer, for example, on, on tax sale. Uh, there are, there are obligations that every, uh, county office has. And, and, you know, I, without looking at specific examples, uh, uh, would I see the commissioners going, making decisions about matters, the date of the cards published, like that, to a definition? And, and I get the sense that sometimes the officers feel like they're being told what to do. Does he like how they hear that?
Well, I think, Mr. Iskey, there's just some confusion about it. And I, I wanted to be sure that we were all on the same page. It does not really say that in the special agenda item, item three. And I think there just was some confusion. But you, I believe you've cleared it up. This meeting really is only about the Board of County Commissioners' decisions to do legal notice requirements. I guess they publish minutes and do some other things like that. No other county officer then, including the court clerk or county clerk, would be impacted by that. Is that right?
Yeah, here's one of the things that I think, uh, that kind of came up on Monday with this issue, the legal first grade. It, it did the county act, uh, and, and, uh, act law. Well, let's, let's just go on, uh, on the treasurer with, with, uh, with, uh, uh, tax sale and what have you. If there's advantage for the individual because a publication was not made correctly, it's the county who must bear that cost. It's the county who has to bear that judgment. And, yeah, I think there, I, I, I think there is probably, uh, you know, concerns about that. Is certainly that Board of County Commissioners doesn't tell the treasurer, I'll run their office for it. But if the treasurer chooses wrong, and then, again, I'm not saying that they, they have to follow the issue. But if the treasurer chooses wrong and there's a lawsuit brought, who pays the judgment? If the assessor chooses wrong, who pays the judgment? Uh, uh, it's, it's the county. And in some sense, I think the county needs to be on the same page. All elected officials need to be on the same page to protect the taxpayer. Uh, you know, and, and whether this is an issue of everybody has to do it this way, I, I, I don't know. But I hear that from the commissioners, and, and again, I apologize for not being there today. Uh, but, uh, that's kind of what, what I was looking at is, uh, some of the requirements for the commissioners under 1944, I'm sorry, 444. Uh, uh, when you go into, I would say, five, section 106, they talked about that. Uh, legal notices and so forth. Uh, you know, who is required to have legal notices? And I agree with you, the different elected officials are required to have different, uh, uh, different notices.
Mr. Iskey, I understand your concerns, but I think that under the law, that's all that can be is concern. I do not believe that the general powers of the Board of County Commissioners gives them the authority to tell any other county officer who to select when they do their legal notices. And I think that's the confusion here today. And I'm sorry to interrupt your day home when you're ill, but I think that was an important concern of the other county officers here. And certainly the courts were also concerned, although certainly we've been put, our mind has been put at ease that it does not involve the district courts. But that's a concern for everyone because everybody in here, um, has some different interest in who says where and when legal notices are to be done. So I think you've answered the question that this is just about the county commissioners and their legal notice decisions. Thank you.
Judge, can I ask one question?
Sure.
She said she...
I think that, I think that the term involved with, in this, in this, uh, matter today concerns your, the, your, uh, directing to a, uh, uh, the court clerk about things that need to be published. Uh, I, I just, I'm trying to hear, you know, I, I see your concern. And, and one of the terrible things I'm afraid of, you know, our lawyers think, you know, somebody gets it wrong here, well done, you know, a lawsuit gets filed and that comes to come in front of you. And, you know, a lot of judges there are sort of, you know, certainly concerned about that.
Oh. I'm not concerned about that.
I see your position as being, you're saying you can, uh, be honest with the court clerk on that and you would instruct them to, to publish and so forth. Am I, am I following?
I think so, yeah.
She said she thinks so.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks. Uh, and that makes perfect sense to me, is, is that, that the judicial branch would be, would be directing the court clerk to do certain publications for, for different matters. And that makes sense. Uh, all right, do you need me for anything else at the moment?
Not at the moment.
All right, well, please feel free to call back. I too.
Okay, feel better. Now that we've exercised all these cerebral gymnastics, it had nothing to do with anyone except for us.
Cerebral gymnastics? I've never heard that.
Well, everybody, I mean, people come in here and they start talking about, well, you're not going, you know, we don't want to publish here. We don't, nothing in this agenda said anything about making everyone else do anything. Now, but, you know, I, I kind of encouraged it because I wanted to see it play out.
Mr. Al.
I, I appreciate the, the judicial being concerned about, uh, what we're doing here. I would also think of that court fund, which I've always been looking at, that court fund, to see how those apples and oranges work. But we're worried about it on legal, have a possible judge, and yet we clean our judge's office with a, with a employee from the court. And it comes out of court fund, always amazes me. But I appreciate your interest on that, on me, on me on that.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that has anything to do with public...
On the other side of that, I just don't see what they have right here.
No public legal, legal publications has nothing to do with cleaning of the office. Let's not be...
Well, I just say I'm a bit concerned about the court fund.
No more.
I just enjoy that.
And Mr. Al, you're disrespectful.
You're welcome, Mr. 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 Mr.
Let's get back to what we're here for, what we're here for and quit arguing. All right, where are we going with this?
Well, we were discussing, determine which newspaper or newspapers will be used for publishing legal notices. I've already told you, I, I think that the claim of progress is overcharged. That's the man I have, they disagree. I personally think they should be, um, at least for this year, taken out of the hat and not considered this year. They're overcharging.
So what we're pretty well saying here is they're guilty?
Not guilty.
Well, I mean, it's same...
Bad at math, maybe. No, it's not even guilty.
Well, and, and, I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about taking them out. If, if they're, if they've been overcharged, then we need to look at the overcharges. I mean...
Here they are.
Okay. But I feel that, that in, in, in a relative term, they should be given their day in court. If they think they've done something, I mean, if we think they've done something wrong, then we should go with, get with them and find out.
You're talking about, you're saying accusing them of a, of a crime.
No.
I'm talking about saying they're bad at mathematics.
Okay, so we, we strike them for a year over that? I mean, isn't it real here? If, if they've done something wrong, I, I can understand it. Do we know they've done something wrong? For sure? Do we know their charges are over? I see those numbers, but that, that, I don't know anything about counting ads.
Uh, there was a skating art article, editorial, uh, where I was called too stupid to figure it out. But I can live with that. This is what, this is what...
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way that maybe a newspaper from another county could look and make their opinion than it not be from a newspaper in this county accusing Claver Progress of overcharging? Could tell us a world of look at it?
I don't know. I think it would be somebody, we'd have to probably hire somebody to look to get, you know, to get the truth. And I'm not saying Mrs. Wiley's not right on this. I'm not saying Bailey is. I don't know. I don't count ads. I don't know how to count. If there's been an overcharge, then we have a problem. But if there hasn't been an overcharge, what we're doing is saying that these people, we're going to kick them out for a year.
No, we're not saying that. I said that. But you two, I mean, that's why there's, there are three of us. That's my opinion. We drop them out of the hat for one year and, you know, and then they sort of, for other reasons as well. They didn't invoice. We, they are not even telling us how they charged us. There's a bill that says this is what you owe. Next time you go on a, on a trip, turn in, turn in, uh, $20 worth of food without, without an itemized list of where you went to eat on this class or whatever, and see if you get paid.
I won't get paid, but I'll know about it right then.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Sometimes it takes a while to see the, the areas.
Okay, so what do you want to do here? Are you making a motion?
Well, we're still in discussion.
Well, has anybody got anything else? They have, they have a motion.
I'm talking about up here. I'm talking about up here if there's discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, wait.
I'll finish that. Ms. Wiley, we'll put you on this. If you could come up here and talk to us, please. Ms. Wiley, what, what made you look at this? Was it to visit with Mr. Thacker?
Um, no, I, um, I just, um, back when we changed the methods a couple of years ago.
Yes, ma'am.
I was, I knew that the rate set by state law was by order by line. And, um, they started using an inch rate. And frankly, at the time, I did not have time to check on that. And then as we have been publishing things, I've noticed discrepancies in inconsistencies in charges between different newspapers. For example, the year that you published in a county newspaper plus a daily newspaper. And, um, I have always felt like my ethics and morals were my own and other people's were theirs, and I shouldn't comment on that. But, um, other people believe that, that this is public money and we all need to be concerned about it. And I know public money has been tight. And so since I had this concern, I did this spot audit. I do not know whether, I'm not an auditor. I'm not a, I billed legals for 30 years, but I've published the newspaper. But because, um, I was concerned about this, these inconsistencies, I went in and did a spot audit. And, um, frankly, my ethics were questioned by other newspapers. And I felt like if we were all going to examine each other's ethics, maybe we should do that. And so I raised my concern with Kirk. And, um, I got copies of the publications and invoices from the county clerk's office to another party. And I audited it. And I just feel like we need to be protecting the taxpayers' monies. And so I raised the concern. I do not know whether you should go back and try to recoup this money. I do not know anything. I just feel like going forward, you need to get itemized invoices and pay according to the rate set by state law since this all came up because, um, Mr. Dabney raised the concern in 2010 that we were not following state law. I think if we're going to follow state law, we need to... I think if we're going to follow state law, we need to follow state law going forward and make sure that it's done properly.
And ma'am, I appreciate you answering my questions. I know you've been sick, and so I appreciate you.
Yes, I, like I say, I am not a paid auditor, and I assume that if you wanted to have the state auditor's office come in and audit this, you would have to pay them for that.
That's right.
And so it would be a charge, and they may charge you more for the audit than any potential overcharges. So I just feel like going forward, we need to follow state law strictly and have itemized invoices to protect the taxpayers' interests. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, you got anything else?
No, that's all I had.
Do I have a motion on what we want to do here?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we stay with the rotation with the exception of Claver Progress for this, for this year.
You mean to take them totally out, put them out during?
No, I mean taking them out for the year.
Okay, so the other, the other three papers, the Claver Progress.
I know Independent, Chelsea Reporter, and the Uggah Lake Leader are still in the rotation for minutes and publications.
Second. Delozer?
No.
Halm?
Aye.
Thacker?
Aye.
Motion's been carried.
Okay, item two, possible drawing to be held to select your rotation order for newspaper publications.
Yeah, I don't want to touch them.
Questions, prepare, next question, chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask Commissioner Halm and Thacker if their vote had anything to do with our coverage or the pending grand jury investigation.
Having what? No.
Did the action you take in the investigation you launched with a competitor have anything to do with the pending investigations into your office and our coverage of the newspaper?
No. I mean, what are you going to do, write a bad article about me?
No, I'm just asking you.
Another skating editorial? It has nothing to do, it has nothing to do with that. I just told you, it's, you've overcharged, and that's it. I can't wait, I can't wait for the grand jury. I mean, remember I'm the one that said, let's go. I, I, I try to get people to sign up.
Okay, let's get back on to the publication.
Hey, we're still, you know, ask a question and get an answer.
Go ahead, Christine.
Yeah, you draw it.
Hey, how is this going to be? This, this the first four months? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
This, this one be the first four months?
Yeah, one, two.
Okay, Uggah Lake Leader will do the first four months. I know Independent do the second four months. And Chelsea Reporter, the last three, four months. I think we have possible, possible drawing. Okay, we did the drawing, I think we have to.
Well, no, this, this is where we address the concerns that the elected officials had came in.
Right.
Started the meeting off, off of the agenda.
Hey, we did the drawing selection, I don't think that, that's doing, I don't think we have a motion on that. Number three, discussion of possible exceptions for publication of legal notice.
I have.
I think we do have to do it.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I spoke to Mr. Iskey on Monday when we talked about having a special meeting, because I myself wasn't clear on what publications we were talking about. And we have a fair board election that we need to publish ten days prior to the beginning of the filing period, and the filing period has been selected, I think, rather than have to file, but it's been selected for January twenty-fourth, or, from the seventh. And so I have a calendar in the other folder that, depending on how that outcome came out, whether we have an issue of getting that published, because we haven't published anything for it yet, waiting on this decision. So I'm not familiar myself with Uggah Lake Leader's publication cutoff dates. So when, we would need to have that published by, uh, let's see, twenty-seventh. So ten days prior would be the seventeenth. So can we get that in Uggah Lake Leader as of today, if we get it to them immediately, if I walk right down and do it right now, can we get that published for the seventeenth?
No.
I can answer that, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Where are you at, president?
Then that's why we have the exception on the agenda for, Mr. Iskey said that we needed to get that clarified, because we need a newspaper that we can get that publication in, or we need to have another special meeting and amend our filing period, and it has to commence in the month of January and be five consecutive business days. So, you know, I, I had issues with what, what are we going to do? So that's why that is on the agenda, and I have one other issue, and I think it's been answered by that, because we have to publish our holiday list between January first and January twentieth. So to get that in the newspaper, I basically, what would be the cutoff date for?
Tuesday.
Tuesday next week.
Thursday's paper.
Tuesday for Thursday's papers, so publication date is on Thursdays?
Yes, ma'am.
At Uggah, okay.
What, ma'am, what time, what time on Tuesday?
Um, about three p.m.
Okay.
Now, I understand that with Martin Luther King Day next week, we may have to juggle a little bit, and we can certainly work on that, because I know that Monday's a legal holiday, and you may have some exceptions come out of a commission meeting, and I understand that, and we'll work with you on it.
Okay.
Chairman, I think it was with Mr. Iskey and Judge Post, and also the treasurer, when they were talking to allow the electives to be able to do their legal notices efficiently and by statute, wasn't that what you said, Mr. Thacker? And I think that's what he alluded to, was it correct? And that these were just talking about the commissioners' proceedings.
Yes, sir.
And that we would continue on with whatever fell under statute.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that not what you wanted?
Yes, sir.
I know we had the accusation that we were trying to tell people what to do, I believe that elected official left, but I wanted to make sure he knew that we weren't telling them, we were going by statute.
Right. Thank you so much.
Before the accused. Back to the chair.
Thank you. Okay, I guess we really need to back up to net number two real quick on possible. That's the three, the three and the way they're going to be done, I need a motion that that's the way we're going to take care of this. We're going to use these three in this order.
Well, then, to be more specific, to publish minutes of the commissioner proceedings.
Yes.
For item number two, we go on the order, the draw, the Uggah Lake Leader.
I know the second, and Chelsea's third.
Chelsea's third. Motion approved.
Ms. Wiley had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
My question was, we're talking about strictly minutes and claims here, correct?
Mm-hmm. Not bid notices.
Yeah, bid notices.
I guess bid notices too.
Commit, on the, on the chairman.
Commission bid notices.
There you go.
Yeah.
Minutes and claims.
And just as a question from the fair board, Bailey, do you have the capability to get their notice published? I believe they'd have to have it in tomorrow's paper. Do you have a physical capability to, to do that?
In tomorrow's paper?
I believe it's tomorrow's.
Has to be published for the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, forty-six.
Yes, right, I believe Mary already has the ad, just waiting to pull the trigger, right?
We haven't submitted it to anyone.
Okay.
That I know of.
But yes, we can, we can.
Okay, so, so there is a, there is an option within the campaign, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yes.
I have a call.
No, you haven't called, you have to.
Delozer?
No.
Um, Halm?
Aye.
Thacker?
Aye.
And I want to make something real clear here, I have no problem with the other, I, Chelsea's paper, I grew up there, that, I want to see that paper succeed, I just think that, that all the papers shouldn't be involved. That's, that's my only thought on this. Okay, item three, we've, you've brought part of that up.
Um, yeah, so can, can I clarify the, when?
Nelson wants to butt in real quick.
Oh, sorry.
What did you, what did we just pass? I mean, what did that include?
Administers' proceedings, minutes, and commissioner bid notices.
Proceedings, claims, and bid notices. So the proceedings and claims, one thing, and your bid notices, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Well, proceedings is minutes, and claims go with the proceedings, and the bid is a separate, that when you approve them in here, then that's in a board meeting, then that's what we publish.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I want to be sure I'm clear.
Okay, the exceptions, let's get back to the exceptions real quick.
Okay.
We've got, we've got to have a motion, we have a motion when we decide what we're going to do there.
Okay. On the, on the exceptions, the only thing I'm trying to clarify there is that this board told the county clerk's office, the secretary, to publish those, so I don't know if that's our decision where we publish, or is that the board's decision to publish? It is not one of those things we just mentioned, so I'm assuming that we can make that decision and publish it anywhere that we can meet the deadline for the.
On your exceptions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Agreed.
For both of those items. We just didn't have all this clarification before.
Right.
Today, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear before I go back and push the button and send.
When you have to have something in there, you, it's, you have the right to put it where you need to put it.
To get it.
That's what you're.
Is that including like notices for budget meetings and budget being published? Once the budget is approved?
Just that. Just that little conflict of the county clerk's office, I don't think any other office.
What you're talking about is if you have a deadline, and you need to get that in paper, you, you want to have the discretion to decide where you're going to put it.
If this board does not make that decision in a manner, in a timely manner, where we can get it in there with that deadline, do we have discretion to make an exception to get it published? Or do you want us to just not publish it and meet that, not meet that deadline?
No, you have to, you have to.
You have to meet the deadline, and I'm going to get this over with quick. I make a motion that we, that we use the exception in areas where we have to. Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Thacker?
Aye.
Motion's been carried.
Item four, transfer of funds to county general fund as reimbursement for benefits paid before fiscal year twenty thirteen, fourteen budget approval.
Okay, and this, we are just doing today because it makes it look more timely for us to be able to get it on the books. Sorry, I've got publication mixed with numbers here, give it just a minute.
Here's some of your things. Here's some.
Okay, thank you. I have copies for each of you two, while we're talking, because it's kind of confusing. I'll make it as short and as sweet as I can. Okay, I'm going to present to you a transfer of appropriations, and it's a little bit unusual, and the reason for it is, at the beginning of the budget year, for how many years passed, I don't know, there has never been an account set up, or accounts set up specifically to pay benefits for the employees from, they've always been paid from general government twenty dash two hundred, where we pay utility bills and buy furniture, or whatever we need to do, you know, it's general government. So in talking to the CPA this year, that was something that I think I talked to you guys individually about, and we wanted to get change to make benefit accounts. As you know, the budget wasn't approved until October. So with that, we had to go ahead and make payrolls, and in temporary appropriations, those funds were set aside in the general government twenty dash two hundred account. So we continued to make payroll July, August, and September before the budget was approved in October, and paid those benefits from twenty dash two hundred. Now, we need to move, when we completed the budget, the numbers where they were approved were put into the new accounts for the CPA. So I now need to move those funds that we use for July, August, and September benefits back to twenty dash two hundred to reimburse it for what we used prior to the budget being approved. And you have in front of you account summaries of the total amount encumbered in all of the new benefit accounts today, and how much I'm moving. I'm not moving every penny, I didn't do a penny audit. I went through, and what you have in front of you is a page from each of the new benefit accounts that we use out of the December payroll, so that was the best, closest, newest, most recent estimate that I could get for what we'll need for the next six months of January through June to pay those benefits. And I took that six months, and my figuring was on each page directly, to show you what the cost needed should be, and then how much is the balance in the account, and that's at the bottom of your page, shown on the printout. And that leaves, like, in this account, there is a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars left at that point. I'm only transferring a hundred and seventy-five. I called the CPA, Bill Turner, and talked to him, and we agreed that if we save us some round numbers, and we left a little bit extra in those specific accounts that our benefits are now coming from, we'd be a little safer than trying to get it right down to the nub and maybe having to go back and put some more money back in those places. So that's why those are not. So I'm presenting that to you today for your consideration.
Okay, any questions?
None.
You have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the transfers presented by First Deputy from the clerk's office, the county clerk's office.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Thacker?
Aye.
Motion's been carried.
Thank you, gentlemen, that'll make our life much easier.
Okay, public comments are not on here, but I've got an idea if people have some public comments or questions. Anybody?
I think you're very nice.
Okay, I have a motion to the jury.
Motion to the jury, say.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Thacker?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to the jury.
To eleven.
To eleven.